Hi, I'm Tracy Middlebrooks. I'm with Muddy Paws Dublin. We are a boarding, grooming, daycare, and training facility. Our facility is a group play area. Our dogs get six to eight hours of playtime every day. So when your dog comes to stay with us, they're not just sitting in a kennel. We have indoor facilities as well as outdoor facilities. We do separate dogs according to size and temperament. All of our kennels are indoors, so when your dog stays with us, they are sleeping indoors in a climate-controlled environment. When it's too hot or too cold outside, this is one of the areas the dogs can come to get playtime. That way, they're not just sitting in a kennel. If need be, we can rotate dogs between outside and inside. So if your dog is only used to the inside and only goes outside to potty, we can accommodate that. We have a full-service grooming salon, six days a week. We also offer training. I am a certified professional dog trainer. I can do everything from basic obedience up to canine good citizens tests. So if you have any questions, feel free to call. Most of the training is done here on-site. We have boarding also, as well as daycare. Boarding starts at 27 a night. We do give a multiple dog discount as well as military discounts. We like to say that a tired dog is a happy dog. When your dog comes to stay with us, we look at that as them getting a vacation.
I'd like to call WM City Council Meeting Order. If you would, let's please stand, and we'll ask Councilman Benny Jones to give us our invocation, and we'll say the pledge to the flag.
I bow out. Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here, Lord, and conduct business, Lord, in your presence, Lord. We just thank you, Lord, for giving us wills, some knowledge, and understand, Lord, to make these decisions, Lord, that will better our community, Lord. We're just thanking for everyone that came out, Lord. You give everyone safe travels. They leave, Lord, until we meet again, Lord. We just ask these other blessings in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I thank you, everyone, for coming today. We got some special presentations we want to make prior to getting started with the regular meeting.
Hey, we got two folks that are receiving service pins today, which I got my 10-year pin on. But first, Mr. Matthew Bradshaw. And we're awarding, let's see, Matthew Bradshaw, he started work, what, on 7/20 was your 10th year? Okay. So 7/20/2009. So on 7/20/2019, he got his 10 years in. And for a 30-year pin for Mr. Gary Hancock, who I think on August the 15th of this year, hit your 30th year with the city. I don't know if, Michael? Is anything you want to say about Mr. Hancock, Michael?
We had more employees like you.
Amen. All right, is Ms. Pat, that's it, and that was all of them. Is Ms. Patsy Baker here? Okay. There's a, there's some thing in your materials about a word that keep Dublin Lawrence beautiful. But see, there's nobody else here to speak on that. Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Congratulations to you, too. Item number one is approval of the October 17th, 2019 City Council meeting, and then we'll go into the October 29th, 2019 Special Call City Council meeting minutes. If you are okay with both of them, we'll just get approval for both.
So move.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Brown that we approve both sets of minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number two is approval of bills over $3,000. You have a list of those, all say.
Make a motion to pay the bills, Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Griggs, we pay the bills. Any discussion there? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Item number three is approval of purchases over $3,000, and I think we have two, and I think we could do those together unless you want to separate those. Mr. Jones?
All right. We have two purchasers for your consideration. The first one is a purchase of computer, some computer power supplies. These will provide power in case of power outages for some servers, several computers at the city and our main servers at the hub. The total for these four units, or, yeah, four UPS units is $5,215 from Joe Powell and Associates. Any questions about that? The second one is a bid, awarding a bid for demolition of dilapidated houses. Again, we received a ton of bids on this thing. There were 11 bidders to demolish a list of 26 dilapidated houses. The low bidder was Curtis Perry Construction, did a very good job the last time on our 17 houses we tore down. This new contract includes that all these lots will be cleaned off and grassed, and it gives the city the option to add more houses to that contract, and we already have several ready to go that we can add to it. He says he can get this work, the contract calls for it to be done in three months, and Mr. Perry thinks he can get this done in about six weeks. The low bid amounts $128,700, and with an anticipated amendment, staff recommendation is to award to the low bidder.
That's what the amendment about Scottsville is. We're gonna wait till we talk with the lady about the Scottsville.
I would need to be worded, Josh.
Just need to say, subject to the potential to remove any homes in the Scottsville area.
That good with you, Mr. Jones?
That's good.
You make that motion?
I make the motion.
Okay. Now hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Griggs that we approve the contract. The two purchases. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
It's that time of year, time to fire up the grill, relax, and have some fun. Whether you're a grill master or wannabe, the Big Green Egg will change the way you think about cooking. Georgia Pools has a large selection from which to choose. They carry a wide variety of accessories, too, from charcoal starters to grilling tools, seasonings, and sauces. Get your own Big Green Egg cooking system for as low as $58.83 per month. And while you're waiting on that perfect steak to cook, relax in your very own Paulie's Island habit. What better way to spend the summer days ahead? When you're thinking of grilling and chilling, think Georgia Pools, located at 1201 Hillcrest Parkway in Dublin. Call Georgia Pools at 275-3607.
Okay, item number four is a presentation by Jessica Reynolds of the Department of Community Affairs, awarding Main Street Dublin the Georgia Exceptional Main Street and naming Dublin a 2020 accredited GEMS community. That's a lot to say.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Jessica Reynolds. I'm the Director of the Office of Downtown Development at the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. As the Office of Downtown Development, we manage the Georgia Main Street program and have the pleasure of working with 118 cities across the state of Georgia. As you're aware, the Main Street approach provides a balanced path towards revitalization with a focus on economic development in the context of historic preservation. In partnership with the National Main Street Center, our participating cities are required to meet 10 annual standards of accreditation during the annual assessment process every single year in order to become an accredited Main Street America city. During the assessment process, we work as a team to identify communities that have gone above and beyond consistently to excel in each of these 10 standards. These cities are known as Georgia's exceptional Main Streets, or what we lovingly refer to them as GEMS. It is because of the Dublin Main Street Program's commitment to excellence and stable leadership that I am here this evening to congratulate, or this afternoon, to congratulate you all on being designated as a 2020 GEMS community. Over the past three years, downtown Dublin has seen $10 million of private and public investment happening downtown. There have been 35 new businesses opening with 97 net new jobs created just in your district alone. Additionally, your Main Street program has attracted over 172,000 people downtown through civic events. You are all to be commended for your dedication to rebuilding the heart of your community. To recognize the city of Dublin and as a token of our appreciation, I would like to present to you this gateway sign as a recognition of your Main Street designation. Thank you for all that you do, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for downtown Dublin.
Nice.
We'd love to get a picture.
I tell you, we can't say enough good about what the work that's going on in the downtown community. And Tara, thank you so much for what you've done and what you continue to do, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you. Thank you, too, Matthew. Okay. Item number five is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to establish a restaurant district in certain areas of downtown Dublin. Mr. Jones?
This is ordinance number 19-21, an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin to establish a restaurant district in certain areas of downtown Dublin, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, we will now close our City Council meeting and open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance. Not, is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance? If not, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the City Council meeting, and turn it over to council for action.
I'm gonna move for approval.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Brown that we approve the district, or ordinance, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Mr. Daniels, would you call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Dix.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Thank you. Okay. Item number six is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to establish permitting and regulations for mobile food service units in the city of Dublin. Mr. Jones?
It's ordinance number 19-22, an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Dublin to establish permitting and regulations for mobile food service units in the city of Dublin, to establish an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay. We will now close our City Council meeting and open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance. Not, is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance? Not, we will now close the City Council, oh, excuse me, the public hearing and open the City Council meeting and turn it over to council for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Davis, and I'm sorry, who was the second? Second by Mr. Jones that we approve the ordinance. Any discussion on that one? If not, Mr. Daniels, would you call the roll?
Councilman Dix.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Okay. The next one is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to allow those same mobile food service units within certain zoning districts. Mr. Jones?
It's ordinance number 19-24, an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin amending the zoning ordinance to allow mobile food service units within certain zoning districts of the city to define new terms to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay. We will now close our City Council meeting, reopen the public hearing, and ask if there's anyone to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance. Not, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to? Hearing none, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the City Council meeting, and turn it over to council for action.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Jones that we approve the ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Daniels?
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Okay, thank you.
Friendly Gus has everything you need this football season, from our everyday value items like the $2.99 two-piece dark meat chicken snack, or our fish pork chop three-piece dark or two-piece white meat snack for just $5.50. Friendly Gus caters. Order one of our 20-40 or 60-piece chicken finger or wing platters, and don't forget the tater logs. Friendly Gus is your one-stop shop for tailgating parties. Our food is always fresh and our service is always friendly. Friendly Gus with locations throughout middle Georgia. Shop Cocker Brothers Cash and Carry at 320 South Jefferson Street for additional tailgate items like paper products, chicken wings, bulk drinks, spices, sauces, and more.
I think we got one more second reading. Item number eight is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to deannex 0.24 acres, more or less located at 2736 Highway 257, Dublin, Georgia.
All right, this is ordinance number 19-23, an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin, deannexing from the municipality of the City of Dublin, Georgia, 0.24 acres, more or less, previously annexed as B2 highway-oriented business zone. Said property is located at 2736 Highway 257, Dublin, Georgia.
Okay, we will now close the City Council meeting and open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, the annexation. Not, is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to? Okay, hearing none, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the City Council meeting, and turn it over to council for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Jones, we approve the ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Daniels?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Thank you. We now have, item number nine is a first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4 alcoholic beverages to add new definitions and allow brew pubs to sell beer and wine by the package. Mr. Jones?
All right. This is ordinance number 19-25, an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin, Georgia, to amend the definition section of Chapter 4 alcoholic beverages to define new terms, to add a new subsection to specify the authority granted by the licensing pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances, to provide for packaged sales of wine or malt beverages by brew pubs for consumption off premises, to provide for an effective date, to repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and for other purposes.
Okay, the second reading and public hearing on this proposed ordinance will be at our December 12th meeting at noon, or 12:30. Okay, item number 11 is, excuse me, item number 10 is the first reading of an ordinance to annex and incorporate 14.07 acres, more or less located at 1560 Georgia Highway 95 as B2 highway-oriented business zone. And that's actually 199. That's just a mispronouncing.
19 South.
19 South, okay, 19 South, okay.
It's ordinance number 19-26, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the City of Dublin, Georgia, 14.07 acres, more or less of land located at 1560 Georgia Highway 19 South, landlots 157 and 158 of the First Land District of Lawrence County, Georgia, as B2 highway-oriented business zone. Proposed use is a travel center.
Okay, the second reading and public hearing of this proposed ordinance will be at our December 12th meeting at 12:30. Item number 11, the discussion interaction on a bid to L&amp;L Utilities for the Helen Drive Sanctuary Sanitary Sewer System Improvement Project.
Okay, there on Helen Drive, we've got several houses that the sewer is basically flat. Where their sewage runs into our line is just flat, so it doesn't run properly, and it in fact goes under a house, which is just about impossible to work on when something's going. It's an old clay line, and it's good to get it out of our system regardless. So we took bids to replace this with a new sewer that will also allow some other customers in that area that could not connect to the sewer to connect, including Greater Macedonia Church. It was kind enough to give us an easement on their property. We got two bids, one from Powell's Plumbing and Utility and the other from L&amp;L Utilities, Inc. L&amp;L is the low bidder, $82,600, and staff recommendation is to award to L&amp;L Utilities.
Okay, you've heard staff recommendation. What's your pledge, Council?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Brown that we approve the award to bid. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Item number 12 is discussion and interaction on award a bid to Thomason Hutton Engineering for the Hillcrest Parkway Widening Improvement Projects.
Excuse me. Thomason Hutton Engineering did all the engineering, original engineering work for the widening of Hillcrest Parkway. You'll remember that we awarded the contract for this to McClendon from Vitalea to do the actual construction. This is a contract with Thomason Hutton to do, to oversee the project. They'll have someone on-site every day for the full two years of the project, plus doing any construction engineering that's needed. A lot of services that are provided, and the full list is in your materials, that the services will be provided. It's done hourly, so we hope it doesn't end up being this much. Hopefully, it'll be a little less, but the total estimated cost for these services is What you're approving is that estimate and the, mainly the hourly costs that they're charging and the services they'll provide.
Lance, could you make reference that, you know, this is included in the T-Sploß allotment, correct?
That's correct. All this is...
...will be coming from?
Yes, so this is coming from the, there's $17 million budgeted for this project that was raised in the T-Sploß. It's a regional project, and so the, all of this will come out of that T-Sploß budgeted money.
I see it's about a 24-month project. Is that right?
Mayor, I'm gonna abstain from voting because of land ownership on Hillcrest Parkway.
Okay. All right. Council, you've heard staff's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moving for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Davis that we approve the, approve the bid to Thomason Hutton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
I'm Lock Wilford with three big reasons to buy at Dublin Nissan. Price, selection, and savings.
Drive the Rogue SV for as low as $26,740 with 0% financing.
Get more Nissan for your money at Dublin Nissan.
Drive the Altima SV as low as $23,725.
Call, click, or come see us. Dublin Nissan, the only dealer you will ever need.
Item number 13 is a discussion and interaction on a resolution adopting the Lawrence County Service Delivery Strategy.
Every 10 years, the county and municipalities within the county get together and negotiate who is gonna provide what service to its citizens. Good examples, when it first came in, the county and the city both had separate recreation authorities. It was negotiated in those first round that they would combine those and provide it jointly through an authority. We really, in the last 10 years, the county and the city worked very well together on all these items, and there were, there were no substantive changes to our agreement with them. And anytime, so that way, if, when the city wants to go out the sides of the city and provide services, we would, we would look at our service agreement with the county and see who's agreed to do it. If it doesn't, if, anytime, but anytime the council's pleasure is to do some things outside the city that we normally do, or allow the county to perform some functions inside the city, we can negotiate with those on those. It just, the strategy negotiated just tells you who's the primary person, who provides those services in absence of any other agreement. We do water and sewer inside the city and a few areas outside the city, but we're agreeing that the city of Dudley will do their sewer inside their city. The city of Dublin's not gonna provide anything there, unless we have a new...
Unless it's agreed to.
Right, unless it's agreed to subsequently.
Okay. Staff, any, I mean, uh...
I'm moving for approval and acceptance of the Service Delivery Strategy Plan.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Griggs to approve the plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to citizens' comments, or do any citizens that'd like to address council today?
I'm sorry I was late. I apologize for my late arrival, but I come bearing good news.
All right.
Our Keep Dublin Lawrence Beautiful affiliate was awarded first place in the state this year in our population category, and that, a big part of the application was leveraging resources and partnerships, so I think that put our community way over the top of most, there are 70 in the, in the state, but I don't know of a community that has a council or departments or organizations that, that pull together on the litter and the recycling beautification efforts like our community does, especially the council, you know, agreeing to help us with a lot of things we do, and then all of the agencies related, department heads, public works, and my goodness, sanitation, just everybody, just tree board. I think you're why we were selected. I emailed you my summary, but most of it, you can see, most everything we do is city-related, so we appreciate your support. And we wanted to invite, we're gonna take a van December 5th to Atlanta, and there's a luncheon, and this would be a time you could learn more about Keep America Beautiful, Keep Georgia Beautiful, what the other towns are doing, and what they're doing in recycling and beautification, litter. A lot of them have a lot of innovative things that we try to copy and emulate, so you might get some good ideas, but it would be great to represent our community if you'd like to go.
Thank you.
When was that again?
December the 5th, at the Marriott Century Center in Atlanta. And we usually leave about 10, get back about 2. It's just a day trip. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Bossy.
Good afternoon.
It is a great time to be a resident of the city of Dublin, particularly when you think in terms of the many things that Dublin city is doing. It makes me very proud to say that I'm from Dublin, Georgia. I stand to speak about an issue that has to be done with dilapidated housing, and I wanna congratulate the council about what you're doing, and as a representative of the Southside Community Association, which was actually sanctioned by the City Council to, into being. Originally, we started asking the City Council for money. We received $10,000 from the city. That must have been about a few years ago, quite a few years ago, and we've never come to the city to ask for another dime. We have been trying to operate Southside Community off our own efforts and the resources that we are able to generate. And sometimes when you're doing that, and you do it with a pure hand, a pure heart and clean hand, God has a way of blessing those efforts, and I stand as a representative of Southside that God has blessed the efforts of Southside Community Association. Many of you know that all you have to do is look at Waterford down there, which is a typical example of addressing affordable housing here in the city. And of course, sometime along the way as Southside, we don't do everything right, but we learn through our experiences. And I have to say that I want to thank the city for coming aboard to help us out of a real-type situation as it relates to dilapidated housing, and certainly the city has taken two of the properties off our hands, and I appreciate that very much, but we've got a couple of other properties that are slated for demolition, and I'm here today to ask for a state of execution. And what I mean by that, before you go around and tear this house down and charge Southside additional fees for tearing the house... additional fees for tearing the house down, give us a little bit more time to continue to do what we're doing. I've been in and out of court with the dilapidation of housing, and of course, one of the houses that we have addressed, which I, which I invite you to come and look at two eighteen Prince Street, that is primarily volunteer work there. Much of it is, and we've finished a house about a year or so ago, but trying to get someone to live in a dilapidated area is not easy. And rather than put the wrong people in these houses after you finish, I'd rather for them to stay empty until we find the right person who understand what we're trying to do down in that area. Now, I probably could have gone out and rented the house, but not be assured of it being maintained the way it is now, and so we kind of stalled doing anything with the house until we were sure we had the right resident in that house that understand what's going to occur over there. And so, it's been a little bit slow, but we finally got that house rented this month, and I think we got it rented with some resident who understand what is going on in the community, because that's what we want over there on Stur, Minset, and Prince Street, is people who understand what it means. Just as sure as our house is finished, I have to tell you that I've spent many Saturdays over there, not only on Prince Street property that Southside own, but there's a vacant lot right next door to it that I understand what perception mean. If my house is looking good, and the house next door, the yard next to it doesn't look good, it takes away from what we got. So, I have maintained a lot over there that does not even belong to us, because I know the impact that it has on the house that we have at two eighteen. So, what I'm asking from the council is a stay of execution. Don't tear the houses down that Southside has, not at this point, and to continue to allow us to try to work collaboratively with different partners to bring together something to address dilapidated housing. And typically, two eighteen is the quality of what we're talking about for those who have not gone to look at that piece of property, but that's the quality that we're really talking about, and I don't know where to start, but I hate to spend five or six thousand dollars and the city tearing down a house whereas maybe I can sell it, transfer it, or whatever. We are nonprofit entity, whichever dollar we got, it has to be accounted for, and it has to be spent where it is justifying what we're trying to do. So, I'm asking the city, I don't know whether it's in your power for a stay of execution on the property that Southside currently own. We have three more properties that's been slated for demolition, and we're working real hard to try to bring together different collaboratives, and as I said earlier, I appreciate what the city has already done, and I want you to know that we're in this together as it relates to addressing dilapidated. You're not doing it alone. It's good to have a nonprofit entity partner with you that's addressing dilapidated houses, and we at Southside are that partner that's willing, able, and ready to do the things that we need to do, and we don't have a bunch of money to start doing six houses at one time, but we can do one and move to the next one, and all we're asking you to do, let us do one and move to the next one, and don't tear down the houses before we can get to it, and don't make us spend extra money that we can use as we begin to develop the house. So, that's all I'm asking. I wish that you will help outside in any way you can so that those houses are not demolished before we can actually address them.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We're still the one. Century Twenty-One Durden Carnegie is still the number one realty company in Dublin and Lawrence County, and we want to recognize all those who've made us number one, our customers. If you're buying or selling land, commercial property, or residential property, or if you're looking for investment property, there's only one name you need to know, Century Twenty-One Durden Carnegie. For more information, log on to c21dublin.com. Call us at two seven two fifteen thirty-five, or stop by our location at seventeen hundred Veterans Boulevard in Dublin. Century Twenty-One Durden Carnegie, broker George Durden, still the one.
The letter you have before you- How's everyone? I thank Mr. Bossy for kind of opening the door for me today, but the letter, the letter you have before you here is, is a partnership that we created two years ago with Dublin Housing Authority, and the letter you have here is, is in reference to a house that's also on the dilapidated list, two fifteen Prince Street. ECS Realty, my son's company, purchased that property two years ago, and as we purchased the property, Dublin Housing Authority called and asked, do we have any property, any property they wanted to, they needed two houses to start the Youth Build. Youth Build is an organization that goes around and teaches young, young peoples that drop out of high school, people that we call thugs. Let's break it down. Youth Build take thugs, people that don't get their GEDs, just won't go to school. They take those young men and women, bring them in a project, train them, teach them, and give them desire to be, want to be something, and, and we partnered with, with the Dublin Housing Authority on that, on that location of two fifteen Prince Street. They missed a grant in two thousand eighteen, and it, and they applied for it again in November, with later this month, for, for a second time to get this grant. We sought that, that house aside to partner with the Dublin Housing Authority to start that Youth Build program. Well, in the process, we got the thing to go to court on the house. My son Eugene is, is just finishing up from, from Air Force. He worked one of Robin Air Force Base, and, and they missed the court date, but we went to court and, and, and we pleaded with, with Josh and, and courts, but Judge McClendon favored with going on with the process. So, we sought the hiring attorney, but, you know, we would like to take care of the issue in-house. We buy properties all the time and renovate them. I am the lead guy about the house Mr. Bossy just spoke about. I, I basically taught the guys how to construct that house on Prince Street. We've, we've, we've redone sixty houses, I imagine, in dilapidated houses in the city of Dublin. We professionals when it comes to dealing with dilapidated houses. Again, we ask that we be granted the opportunity for this house to be taken off that list, and what I explained to Ms., Ms. Smith at Dublin Housing Authority, if this house need to be done, then we have to look at, we, we need to go on and finish this house and look at another house later on in the project, but it's a good sound house, it's got hardwood floors already in it, and it most definitely do not need to be torn down. I agree, there is a lot of dilapidated houses in Dublin that needs to go. I, I've torn down thirty dilapidated houses that was unrepairable, and I tore them down. But when we have some that can be restored, you put it back on the tax roll, the people get quality living, central heat and air, two bathrooms, we modernize the houses, affordable living, decent rents, and we asking that this house be granted an opportunity to be put back on the tax roll. We're not, we're not talking about six months, we're talking about sixty days. We started on the house, the house had electricity, and we was working on the house, but once the judge ruled, we had to stop, so we ask favor from the council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, does anyone else like to address counsel?
I promise I'll make it short, but I know y'all don't want to listen to me anymore. I was under the impression, you know, y'all were going to bring up today what we had talked to you about, but I think I have kind of led some of you to the wrong impression. We're not complaining about the initial business license. What we're complaining about is our beauty shops, if they have ten people, they pay over two thousand dollars. You don't have a retail store, a grocery store, or anything in this town that does that. We're just asking you to be fair to us about that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've gone to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future. That's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter, member FDIC.
Anybody else like to address counsel? If not, we'll go to counsel comments. Mr. Jones will start with you tonight, or today, not tonight.
I'd like to first start out, thanking everyone for coming out this evening. I made a couple announcements. You'd count something, Rick Authority will be sponsoring a fall festival this Saturday in November the ninth at two P.M., and also this Saturday at one P.M., we have the Veterans Day Parade. Everyone come out, support the veterans at the Veterans Day Parade to this Saturday. Team Court was, we next Saturday, the sixteenth at nine A.M. right here in City Hall, and after Don Knotts, man, I'd like to first thank all the citizens in Royal One for seeing it fit to reelect me to city council for four more years, and I thank you, and I do not take that as, do not just take it for granted, I take it as an honor, and I will, I vow once again to keep working, partnering with the citizens in Royal One to make our community a better community. And with that being said, I think as we look around, you know, in today's society, we have a lot of people who think that because we don't agree on different things, that we can't get along. We all have to learn to work together and come together. We're going to be different, we all got different ideas, and everyone want to see the same thing, especially here in Dublin. Everyone want to live decent, everyone want to see their kids with a good education, everyone want to be, want their family to be safe, and I think we tend to forget that because I stay on one side of town and you stay on another side of town. I want the same thing you want, the exact same thing, and I think we tend to look down, don't look down, let's help each other, and I, and I'm with, and I listen, and compassionate, we do have people that are trying to make our community better. We got, we talked about ten million dollar private investment that's been invested downtown. We got people that don't have that kind of money, but they're coming out their own pocket, taking food, no, I ain't going to say taking food off the table, but making a sacrifice for their family, trying to make neighborhoods better that most people toot their nose up at, and we even come over there and develop, don't even try to develop them. We do need to come up with a way to partner with them, other cities are partnering with them. Please, please, I beg. We say we're going to do it for Scottsville, we got history, Dublin got history that we don't need just to tear down and throw away. I want everyone to know that this was the hub for the civil rights movement right straight through here, Highway eighty come through here. We done had Dr. King, not only gave his first speech here, he was a regular, regular visitor to Dublin, at the Dudley Motel and the restaurants he was allowed to come to, a regular visitor, Saint Paul A&amp;M. Let's not just think about and just forget and try to throw all that away and forget about our history. Other cities have come off of that, they have progressed off of it, they have seen it and, and, and beautified it. Let's look at our neighborhoods, let's part, let's see, I think we're looking at, we want to tear down and do this, have we sat down and talked with the folks and see what the plan is, laid out a plan? I'm not saying everyone don't have a plan, it's some people just don't care. I see some renters don't care, and I, and I'm saying to the people, if you stop rentals that stay out of town, and you got property in Dublin, it's roaring down and torn down, look at where you stay and see where you staying at, where you want that next to you if you staying out of town. But we got people that's local who busting their heaves trying to make our community better, and like I said, we may not all, we don't agree on everything, but we can all the way come together and say, you know what, we want the same thing, we all want to see Dublin a better way, we all want to see Dublin thrive, we all want to see Dublin, no matter what side of the tracks you from, we want to see Dublin better. So, let's, you know, I plead, let's look at compromising and coming up with ways of kicking folks while they're down and making our community work, let's try to see what we can do to make our community better. You got people putting their, putting their money and drive, they, they may not have the millions of dollars they could throw, go out and do ten homes at a time, like some people who can't do it. The Bible say, when much is given, much is required, so the ones who got the money to do it, yeah, they should be required, and they should be treated hard. We all say we Christian, like to throw Bible scriptures around, and I'm tell folk, be careful you throw them around with, I'm well-versed in the Bible backwards and forward, so we're going to be Christians, and someone said, we got to have a forgiving heart and a giving heart, and I think we've lost that some way with our differences, and we're putting apart instead of putting together. So, I'm pleading with Dublin Lawrence County, the city of Dublin, our citizens, let's come together and quit bickering about mining my new things and what, hey, let's make it better. School system, we, we thawing the school system, throw it out the door like it ain't nothing. Look, these are kids we talking about trying to get, we're children, the future, trying to get an education. We need all to sit down and let's talk about these things. Sorry about the net.
Thank you.
Hey, want a successful career? Start with an education that puts you front and center with hands-on experience, an education that will prepare you for opportunity in two years or less, an education that's fast and affordable. Most OFTC students graduate debt-free thanks to the Hope Career Grant, which offers free tuition and more than sixty-three programs. Think differently about college. Choose OFTC for an education that's fast, local, and debt-free. OFTC is an equal opportunity institution.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to congratulate Gary Hancock and Matthew Bradshaw for the service, thank you for what y'all do on a daily basis and have for quite some time. I want to thank everybody for coming and their presentations, I want to echo what's been said about all the various things, and also, I was fortunate and blessed to win reelection on Tuesday, will serve for another four years, so I want to thank the citizens of Ward Four for duly electing me again, and I look forward to, to working with everybody moving forward to see what we can do to continue the progress that we've made in, in Dublin, and I sincerely mean that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Davis?
I want to commend those, all of the employees that got the service awards, all of the people that came up to make the presentations, and I do want to say that in our, at our last meeting, and I want to address the representative for the beauty and barber shops, that we did say we would meet and have a, a response for that, and I noticed it was an article put in the paper, and I want to address counsel, is that the sufficient response that we were going to give, or, or are we giving something else to that?
We can, but that's, we, we put it in our legal organ, and we felt like that was sufficient, but we'll be glad to do whatever you-
I just, I just want to make sure we had a sufficient response, because when I spoke at the last council meeting, I said we would go back and we would consider it, so I just want to make sure we have a sufficient response to it.
If, if you're satisfied with the response, you, y'all got shared in the paper from our standpoint, I mean, when I say satisfied, you understood, you've read our position.
We did read it, but, I mean, is it something that's going to be looked at?
It's going to be looked at on an annual basis, it'll be looked at again coming, our budget runs from July first to June thirtieth. Every year, starting in probably March, we start looking, the finance committee and council start looking, start looking at the budget and finances and how we're going to do what, and that's when it'll be looked at again.
But it's like I said, I think maybe I gave the wrong impression about what we were complaining about, it wasn't that we were complaining about a business license. Sure, everybody needs a business license, and it's just that the way we are charged with the number, it's just like, like you told me, you buy two business licenses, you do, but everybody that works under you don't have to buy business, and that was our issue there.
Well, we will certainly, Jerry Davis and Bill Brown and Gerald Smith are on the finance committee, and they will be looking and bringing to counsel any recommendations, working with Blake, Josh, and Lance to bring recommendations- working with Blake, Josh, and Lance to bring recommendations back. So it will start again the next March, process will. And I know there's already been talk about looking at a couple of different things. Any other questions on that? Just, okay?
Okay, and I do want to thank everybody for coming, attending the meetings, and kudos to Pat's there, she work hard to try to get, keep the city cleaned up, and we all need to make a great effort in assisting in that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Griggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and Matthew, Gary, and Lance, congratulations on your service awards. Thank you for what you do, and thank everybody in the city that is employed by the city for what you do. Thank everybody for their presentations today, and that'll do it. Thank you, have a good weekend.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
I just want to say that-
Oh, start it out.
I'll take hers twice.
I don't know why I left two of y'all laughing. It happens a lot lately.
I'll try to keep it under 20 minutes. But now, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and congratulate the employees that got recognized today, and as always, I'd like to thank Dublin Police Department for all you do, and security y'all provide, and all the employees see of Dublin. And I think we've got a good example, have some citizens kind of step up in this room today, trying to take pride in the neighborhoods, and there is a lot of volunteer work that goes on in Dublin, and we appreciate everything y'all do. And not only do they volunteer, but they get more volunteers together as well to make things happen, and that's really, you know, what it takes to really come together as a community and be sure things are done, because you can't always depend on the city or the government to do things, so it's great to have organizations that step up, take action your own hand, and get a plan in order and all. Certainly, if the city can be there in any way to help, you know, we'd be glad to do what we can with the limited amount of resources that we can on there. And thank everyone for coming, and that's all I've got, believe it or not.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Well, there's been an awful lot said, and I won't add a whole lot more. I do thank everybody for coming, and I really do appreciate hearing the opinions and suggestions that come from all of our citizens. All of us want Dublin to be the best place it can be. I don't think there's a soul really down deep that doesn't want that, the best for themselves and their families, and for us to prosper, and to see about what the future's going to be, and hopefully make it even better. That's what our jobs are, what our hopes and prayers go to. So thank y'all for coming. We gonna struggle right on through and try to make the best decisions we can, and we'll get some of them right, we'll get some of them wrong, and when we make a mistake, we'll fix it. So just thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Powell?
I just want to say that we've been getting a lot of questions at City Hall about the refund of the bond tax that was levied back in 2016. Those checks are slated to be issued by the claims of the class administrator on December the 9th, so taxpayers should get those checks shortly after that. And the other thing I would like to say is, if you ever get a green card notice from the post office that you have a certified letter from the city of Dublin, whether it's the inspections department, or the municipal clerk's office, please don't ignore that. Please be sure that you respond, call us, let us know you got it, and especially if it's about a piece of property, let us know what you're doing with that property.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Daniels? Mr. Jones?
Just, I wanted to thank everybody on the Keep Dublin Lawrence County Beautiful Board. We got a lot of boards, a lot of folks, there's a place you want to plug in. I had somebody call and stop by my office, say, what can I, I just moved here, what can I do in the community? And these service boards, if you'll go to and find out what you want to do, there is a board, or a group, a neighborhood group somewhere doing those things. We can help you find those. If you want to keep Dublin and Lawrence County beautiful, talk to Ms. Patsy. But I especially wanted to just thank those people that serve on those boards, are not paid, they give it their time to do that, and shake their hand, tell them thank you when you see them. Thank y'all.
Okay, no further business, we stand adjourned.